We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is June the 5th, 2023, and this is the Tell City Common Council. If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all may be seated. Thank you. There. All right. Before we approve the agenda, I've got a couple additions here. If we could, under old business, item A, let's make an A1 under that, and that's the grant administrator, administration proposals for the blight clearance. So you can just put grant admin, blight clearance would be fine. We'll open that up. We did receive one. And then under new business, item C, transfer. Connie wanted that added for a transfer, so. You'll notice the agenda's in a little different order than it typically is, but we've got two public hearings at the top. So if there's no other additions to the agenda, I entertain a motion to approve. Or is there, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Julie. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentation of minutes for approval. This is from your May 1st and your special meeting on May 15th. If there are no corrections or changes to that, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. Okay? And just for the citizens that are out there, Janice has passed around a sign-up sheet as part of the blight clearance, the public hearing part, so if you could put your name on that, we'd appreciate that. Moving on to the next part, the blight clearance. This is a public hearing we're going to have, so we'll adjourn our regular council meeting and open up the public hearing for the blight clearance. We have Leah Hawkins here with Region 15. And I'll let her kind of explain a little bit about this if you would like, and then explain the importance of this.
Absolutely. So, thank you. I am the Office of Community and Rural Affairs Regional Planning Commission. The city of Tell City plans to submit an application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a grant from the State Community Development Law Grant, Blight Clearance Program. This program is funded by Title I of Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. These funds will be used for a community development project that will fund a clearance project of the former Perry County Memorial Hospital located in One Hospital Road in Tell City. OGR requires two public hearings prior to the submission of the application. We had one a month or so ago, and we're having our second one now. Public hearings allow the residents an opportunity to express their views on the project or any other project funded with community development law grant funds. I will be taking minutes and recording everyone's comments. The minutes of the hearing and the sign-in sheet that's being passed around will both be used to strengthen the application. If you do have comments, please just state your name and speak clearly. That way we can record any comments that you have, and I'm here to answer any questions as well.
Okay. So if there's anybody out from the public that would like to come up to the microphone and make some public comments of why they feel the old hospital site should be cleaned up and demolished, in favor or even, you know, against it, whatever. Both comments are welcome. We'd love to hear from anyone, so. Who wants to go first? We're asking for participation, so we would love to have you. And you don't have to say much. Just say, you know, I agree. I think it definitely needs cleaned up. It could be that simple. I don't have to go into details. And if you don't want to come up to the microphone, we'll bring the mic to you. We're that flexible. Come on up, Ron. Ron's going to, we'll let Ron break the icebreaker.
Ron's going to get the ball rolling here.
Thank you, Ron.
Ron LaFleur, 12th Street, here in Tell City. No, I was just kind of curious, what is the goal to do with that property, you know? I know it needs cleaned up. I went up there, and I mean, I love abandoned buildings and everything, but it's still scary. You know, and with all the vandals and stuff we have in this town, it's going to end up, somebody's going to get hurt up there. But do we have any plans other than this?
We do, actually, somewhat. I mean, I can kind of halfway answer that, then follow up with the future of it. So after the, if we would get the grant and the property would be cleared, it has to set as green space for five years. That's a restriction. It's part of the grant. It doesn't mean it's a park. It has to be green space. Last time, I think, the word park got used intertwined with green space, and it just didn't turn out well. But after that, the public, we can start asking, what would you like to see there? What would you like to see done with it? And then it can grow on that, what the public wants to see. It's not my vision. It's the public's vision. Let them have say and some ideas, so.
Well, that green space answers it.
Well, it has to be that way for five years. That's just-
That's, that's, that's a shame.
Well, five years ago buy faster than you think.
Oh, I know that.
And so-
In that time, we can do a lot of project planning.
Yep, and you can do a lot of project planning, and so whenever five years is up, you can actually start. Because any big project that may occur up there would probably take a year or two worth of planning and securing any grants that may be available further for the project. So it won't, you know, you can start doing those planning stages probably the next year or two after it gets done.
How many acres is that up there, do you know?
The main parcel is almost seven acres. And there are a couple of smaller surrounding parcels. I think all in all, it's close to 10 maybe.
Yeah.
No, they're kind of, with that five-year thing, that kind of answers everything, but I just want to see a campground or something up there. Just some kind of a campground, you know, the view of it and everything. We don't really have a camp, and, you know, where I live, right there on 12th Street, I see all these fishermen, you know, with their boats and everything.
Sure.
Every, every morning just about, but basically on weekends. All right, good enough.
Well, thank you, Ron. Any other public comments that would like to say anything?
While they're thinking, I'll, I'll make a comment.
You can.
I have a letter that I'll give to Leah. "The former Perry County Memorial Hospital has been vacant and unused for several years. It has become an eyesore infested with rodents and other pests. It is a public safety hazard and is hurting the property values of the residents of the Finn Haven area. The city has declared the property a blighted area and in need of demolition and cleanup. I represent Ward 1 on the City Council of Tell City, and this blighted property is in the ward I represent. I fully support the city's effort to secure grant funding for the demolition of the building and cleanup of the site for future redevelopment. Thanks for your consideration."
That is very helpful.
And for those that may be watching, are recording the video, if they can actually submit a letter to us with their opinions and comments as well, we'll be taking those probably to the end of the week, you think, or next week? Yeah, you can either mail them into the City Hall or drop them off here in the mayor's office. We'd love to have those. So if you couldn't make the meeting, or if you don't want to say anything tonight, you can write it in a letter too, so that's fine. This council, you guys are also citizens of the community. You're welcome to comment anything you'd like to say on it too.
I'd be happy to comment very briefly. Do I need to go up there or stay here?
I think you can stay here.
I may have said this at our prior hearing, I was born in that hospital. Both of my children were born in that hospital. It breaks my heart to see what it has turned into. And so I couldn't be more in support of this project, this blight clearance. Anything's better than what it is right now. So I wholeheartedly support the program.
Thank you, Jeff.
I just imagine if we didn't do anything, that it could just start weighing down and turn that whole part of the city into a crime-infested area. I mean, you don't have-
Sure.
And if it's eventually abandoned and eventually turned over to the city.
It's an expense at that point.
It becomes our expense, and without this grant, it will be all our expense. So let's hope we're successful on the grant.
Another thing, I think, once that area is cleared, that is a prime location for view of the river or whatever. That is a great place up there. It's got a great view of the river and surrounding areas. That would, that would make it appealing for some sort of thing, this location alone.
Like I said, I know the five-year restriction, maybe some people may get hung up on that, but five years, five years will go by a lot faster than you think. Not only that, like Leah said, the planning process of what it can become after those five years can occur prior to that.
And whatever you, maybe you want to build, do with it outdoors, all that spending as well, then maybe you don't have a place right now that we would have a lot of time to plan for.
Yep. Gives us an opportunity, so. And we want to be very thankful again to Ramtel. We have representatives, Mr. Conway back there from Ramtel, to, they're assisting us in this. They're covering the match, the purchase, and a lot of other expenses. So we definitely want to make sure we thank them, because this is not costing us taxpayers. I get it. I understand the grant money is taxpayers' money, but this money's been allocated to be awarded to some community in Indiana. And if it's going to get, someone's going to get it, I want us to get it. So I understand that point, but if we don't get it, somebody else will. So while it's out there, I appreciate us taking the opportunity to get it. Counsel, any other comments? Sure?
I have no problem with the five-year wait to have the green space. I'm just curious why it's set up that way.
I think it's mostly because the city can't immediately turn around and sell it for any kind of profit. In this particular case, it's a little more complicated just because we're, we're, we're so rich to sleep on it by Ramtel, and then they are turning the property over to us. I think it's really just to make sure that property is being used for the betterment of the community in more than this blight-related way.
So if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and end the public hearing for blight clearance, and we can have another public hearing. There's two of them tonight. It's very odd to have two at one time, ain't it?
Is it me?
Nope, not you. You're like, which one? Thank you, and we have a resolution we'll pass when we re-adjourn. So the next public hearing part is for Listen Up LLC. It's the request in a tax abatement. They did become for the council at our May 15th meeting, I believe, was the date they were here, and so requesting that. We have representatives here, Kevin Wanniger. I'm trying to find that resolution here. There it is. But obviously, the resolution comes later. So is there any comments regarding the tax abatement request for Listen Up LLC? Any comments?
I just think it'd be a great improvement to that area of Main Street with everything else that's going along with Main Street. I think it's a good opportunity for us to draw business in there like this.
I think it's wonderful.
A service we've never had and could desperately need.
I got, I won't lie. I wasn't, I had never even used the word audiology in my life until this, and I think it's great. I love it. So I see the benefits that this will be for all of our residents here in Tell City and in and out of the county and surrounding areas. So it's a huge plus.
Certainly save travel time and gasoline for our own residents from having to drive to Oldsboro, drive to Evansville, drive to Rayville, get things done right here.
Great improvement for the community and a great investment in the community. What, that is part of an economic revitalization area?
It is. It's already part of the ERC area.
ERA.
ERA.
ERA area.
Yes, sorry, ERC. That's something else.
That, I was curious.
Yeah.
It's not in the TIF though, is it?
No, no. They did, they, they're actually, I believe it's last redevelopment, and actually on the commission meeting, they voted to dissolve TIF 1 and 2?
Within the city limits.
Within the city limits. So I don't know what all that means, but that's another day. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and end the public hearing part for Listen Up LLC, and we can go ahead and go back to our regular re-adjourn or join in our city council meeting. So it brings us to the first item under old business, is blight clearance resolution. Oh, yeah. You get to read this one. Read fast, right? I've got it here.
Need a motion to authorize a reading of it?
Do you want to know the number?
Yes, I do.
2023-14.
Julie made a motion to authorize a reading.
Okay, there was a motion made by Julie for the reading of resolution. What was the number?
2023-14.
2023-14. I'll second that. And a second by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead and please read ordinance number 2023-14, Jeff.
Resolution number 2023-14, a resolution confirming and approving abatement for Listen Up LLC. We're at-
Row 1.
Which one am I, oh, I'm doing blight clearance. I apologize. Let's do this one. It's shorter anyway. 2023-14. I bet that next one's going to be 15.
Yes.
This is a resolution authorizing application submission and local match commitment. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Tell City, Indiana, authorizing the submittal of the CDBG blight clearance grant application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Tell City, Indiana recognizes the need to stimulate growth and to maintain a sound economy within its corporate limits. And whereas the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, authorizes the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to provide grants to local units of government to meet the housing and community development needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas the City of Tell City, Indiana has conducted public hearings prior to the submission of an application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, set public hearings to assess the housing, public facilities, and economic needs of its low and moderate income residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Tell City, Indiana, that. Number one, the mayor is authorized to prepare and submit an application for grant funding to address the completion of a blight clearance project and to execute and administer a resultant grant, including requisite general administration and project management, contracts, and agreements pursuant to regulations of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number two, the City of Tell City, Indiana hereby commits the requisite local funds in the amount of $241,730. These funds shall be derived from Ramtel Inc., as referenced in their letter dated June 1st, 2023, as matching funds for said program. Such commitment is contingent upon receipt of CDBG funding from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, adopted by the Common Council of the City of Tell City, Indiana this 5th day of June 2023 at 6:30 PM.
Okay. So council, you're the first. There's only, there's only one reading, rather, for resolutions. So is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Larry. Is there a second? Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Yay, one less step. All right. Just before we go into item B, remember we added item A1, which is the grant administration? So we did seek, we only received one. We received two, but one was, they declined to submit. And now this is one that actually does submit. So this is from Indiana Region 15.
Somewhere I've got a letter opener in here, but what happened to it?
It opens just fine.
Good.
And they did put three copies as requested in here. And basically, this is just for like the qualifications and stuff. I don't believe there's a price or an amount in here. There is on that.
I can help.
You can help. There it is. 39.5, is that on the right? Turned the right page, did I? It's that good. And this will actually be paid for out of the grant, so it won't be money out of the city's coffers necessarily. It mean, I know, I understand, again, I understand it's taxpayers' money, but this money will be spent in a community area somewhere. Again, I always want to hear. Oh, I'm sorry, 39.5. I can tell you as much work as Leah and everyone has put into this.
It's a bargain.
It's a bargain. They have put a lot in. And here in Tell City and Perry County, Region 15 has been, is a wonderful partner with us. They've helped us secure millions of dollars in grants for not only Tell City but Perry County, and so we're very blessed to have them and be part of them, so. They will administrate the grant for it, and they'll do all, basically, they do all the legwork. If that makes sense. It's kind of, so, yeah.
Did we ever say how much the grant is that we're requesting?
So we're requesting the full, a full amount, which is 500,000. And then you have to match at least 20%, but due to the cost of everything involved, we're about 32% set to, I'm trying to figure this out.
Thank you. If the motion is in order, I would move that we approve the grant administration agreement subject to legal review.
Okay. We have a motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, who got it? You both?
John by a nose.
But Gary.
Put Gary.
Gary.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Leah. Thank you everybody for being with us for that part. Next item on the agenda. All right, is item B, tax abatement resolution. Now this is the one for the Listen Up LLC, Jeff.
Yeah, yeah.
So this will be 2023-15?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for the reading of that? Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution number 2023-15, a resolution confirming and approving abatement for Listen Up LLC. Whereas the Tell City Common Council did on the 15th day of May 2023, adopt a resolution approving a tax abatement for Listen Up LLC. And whereas during that meeting, the council reviewed the statement of benefits presented therein and other information brought to its attention, and determined that the deductions under Indiana Code Section 6.1.1, 12.1, 4.5, and 6.1.1, 12.14 should be allowed based on the following findings. Number one, the estimate of the value of the redevelopment and rehabilitation is reasonable for projects of this nature. Number two, the estimate of the number of individuals who will be employed can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed installation of the new equipment. Number three, the estimate of the annual salaries of those individuals who will be employed can be reasonably expected to result from the improvements to the real estate and the proposed installation of the new information technology equipment. Number four, the number of individual opportunities for employment, both temporary and permanent, and the compensation to be paid to employees along with the value of the improvements to real estate create benefits of the type of quality anticipated by the council within the site and can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed improvements to the real estate. Number five, the totality of benefits is sufficient to justify the deductions. And whereas the council found that the purposes of Indiana Code Section 6.1.1, 12.1 are served by allowing Listen Up LLC the deductions provided by Indiana Code 6.1.1, 12.14, and 4.5 for a period of 10 years with the deductions to be 10% each year for 10 years. And whereas, notice of the adoption of said resolution and other disclosures required by Indiana Code 6.1.1, 12.1, 2.5 have been duly filed and published in accordance with Indiana Code 5.3.1. And whereas, no remonstrances or objections have been received, and the Tell City Common Council now having considered such resolution and having heard evidence thereon and being fully and sufficiently advised in the premises, finds that the abatements approved on May 15th, 2023 by the Common Council should be confirmed. Now therefore be it resolved by the common, by the Tell City Common Council, Indiana, that the tax abatement sought by Listen Up LLC for 10 years, with the first year being 100% and declining 10% per year thereafter, is now hereby, in all things ratified, approved, and confirmed, adopted this 5th day of June 2023 by the Tell City Common Council, Perry County, Indiana.
Okay, council, you've had the reading of Resolution 2023-15. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip. Is there a second? Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all. Okay. Item C, ordinance for vacating portions of 15th Street and Reuben Street.
I can drive that by myself.
Jeff, you've got a lot of reading to do tonight.
I do. I can explain very quickly, and then if somebody is inclined to make a motion for a first reading. You may recall at our prior council meeting, a discussion of a street vacation that occurred back in the late 60s, yeah, late 60s, and the fact that there was nothing recorded to reflect that, and there were some questions that had arisen as a result of that. I did some research. Long story short, the process for vacating streets back then was different. It did not require all of the same steps that it requires now. It appeared from my research and review that every one of the steps that were required at the time did take place. I was authorized by the council at that time to record the resolution that was ultimately adopted back then, which I did do. And now I have drafted an ordinance that we could adopt now, if we are inclined to do so, to vacate that, which I could then record, and we would have record going forward that this has been properly vacated. I believe the intent was that absent this step, it would force the landowners, that the current landowners are successors in interest to the original petitioners. On one side, direct family members, direct descendants of them. And on the other side is GE, who has owned the portion that was previously vacated continuously that entire time. So that's what this ordinance would do, is to actually vacate those streets so that those landowners would not have to go through the process again that they went through 50-plus years ago, so.
Okay. Connie, what's the ordinance number on this one?
1204.
Counsel, is there a motion to the first reading of ordinance number 1204? Motion made by Julie. Is there a second? Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, do you want to go ahead and read first reading?
Before I begin, I would make everybody aware, there is a legal description of the portions of the streets. There are also general descriptions in here. When I come to the legal description, I'm going to simply indicate that the legal description follows and then skip ahead. Ordinance number 1204, an ordinance vacating portions of 15th Street and portions of Reuben Street in the city of Tell City. Whereas certain streets, more particularly described herein within the boundaries of the city of Tell City, were originally incorporated in the initial plat of the city of Tell City. And whereas said streets, while included in the original plat of the city of Tell City, were never developed as streets. And whereas, the adjoining landowners of said streets initiated proceedings to vacate said streets in 1969, resulting in the adoption of Resolution Number 1-1969 by the City of Tell City, Indiana Board of Public Works and Safety on August 12th, 1969, vacating said streets. And whereas, at the time said streets were vacated, there was no statutory requirement that said resolution be recorded in the office of the Perry County Recorder. And whereas, the Common Council of the City of Tell City has determined that all appropriate steps were taken by the petitioners in 1969 to vacate said streets. And whereas, the Common Council of Tell City, Indiana has determined that no reason exists why the streets and alleys, as described herein, should not be vacated. And whereas, the Common Council of Tell City, Indiana has determined that further proceedings with regard to the vacation of said streets are unnecessary because the original petition to vacate said streets was appropriately pursued. And whereas, the Common Council of Tell City, Indiana now finds that said city streets should be vacated. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the Common Council of Tell City, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the following described streets and alleys be and hereby are vacated from and after the passage of this ordinance. First, that portion of 15th Street lying between Payne Street and Reuben Street, and more particularly described as follows, at which point the legal description of that portion of the street is included. Secondly, that portion of Reuben Street lying between 14th Street and 15th Street in the city of Tell City, Indiana, and more particularly described as follows, and again, the description of that portion of Reuben Street is described. Section 2, this ordinance shall not affect the rights of any utilities to maintain their lines and appurtenances in the area of the streets herein vacated. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section 4, within 30 days after the adoption of this ordinance, any aggrieved person may appeal the adoption of this ordinance in the Circuit Court of Perry County, Indiana, passed and adopted by the Common Council of Tell City, Indiana this 5th day of June 2023.
Counsel, you've had the first reading of ordinance number 1204. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
Make that motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, you want to read second, third reading by title only?
Thank you. Ordinance number 1204, an ordinance vacating portions of 15th Street and portions of Reuben Street in the city of Tell City. Third reading, ordinance number 1204, an ordinance vacating portions of 15th Street and portions of Reuben Street in the city of Tell City.
Okay, council, you've had the first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1204. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by John. Is there a second? Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is the additional appropriation request. So Connie.
This was the one that was tabled at the previous meeting.
Oh, yes. And I'm not going to, sorry, I'm not going to lie, I have not had a free moment to even get that together for you all. So at our next meeting, if we have a special one later this month, which I don't think we are, I'll definitely have something for our July meeting. I just haven't had the time to sit down and work on it. So I wish I had, because I kind of want to put that to bed. So. All right. Under new business.
Related to that, I still have, as I can express to you, I still have concerns about this. And I'm okay with tabling it at the end, but I have some concerns about the appropriations we previously approved for the veterans' transportation, as well as the activities plus for the schools. And before that money is dispersed, I think there's additional steps that need to be taken. The school is an easy one, I think. It just requires an interlocal agreement, which Jeff could.
I can, I can communicate with counsel for the school. I think if we're going to give money to the school, I'll put the burden on the school to come up with the draft of the interlocal agreement. And that should be simple. But I, I agree, I believe we should get that interlocal agreement in place before we finalize that.
And the transportation funding, the information that was provided by Baker Tilly, and I forwarded today and apologize for the lateness, but sent a copy of this email to each of you today, council members. The issues with the transportation is, well, first of all, they say there are no restrictions. Baker Tilly said there are no restrictions preventing the city and county to work collaboratively to deploy ARPA dollars to revenue loss and enumerated uses by state statute, an interlocal agreement would be required. Then they say, there's a couple of things, though, that they say in a response which concerned me, it says the payment of a stipend to volunteers would have to be a legally allowable expense of the county to be paid out of the county's revenue loss funds. We do not find a statute that discusses the payment of stipends to volunteers for the type of programs described. Your local attorney will likely want to verify this as well. The, it says the county may have designed a similar volunteer program, and if the stipend is a vehicle use allowance, it could be structured to be an allowable expense. This is the part that, well, a couple of other parts, but they go on. If the stipend is not tailored to be a reimbursement of expenses, payment could negate the person's volunteer status and therefore be considered compensation and subject to payroll and holding tax. So the way I read this is if the county wants to implement this program, the, they can't just pay a stipend of, I think they're talking about a $50 stipend to volunteer drivers because they're not volunteers, they're paid employees, and so taxes would have to withhold. I assume they'd have to meet minimum wage requirements and all of that, and salary ordinances. They also say if the city could legally run a similar program, providing the money to support the county's program, it's likely not an issue. But again, we cannot say for sure until we better understand the rationale behind the stipends. So I don't know what kind of program the county intends to run. I don't think the city wants to implement a program on its own, but I think those issues need to be clarified before we send the check for $10,000 to the county.
Yeah, we'll need to clarify those and.
We may, we may not be doing the county a favor by doing it when it comes down to it, yeah. I, I, and I just, yeah, I, I just got this, thank you Larry for emailing it. I did review it today, and I share those concerns right now based upon the advice of Baker Tilly. And I can do a little more investigating on that.
You might want to reach out.
I think almost certainly that another interlocal agreement would be necessary. So now that's easy enough, the city and the county have plenty of interlocal agreements, but I think that the county also, and it has to be aware of the strings that come attached with that, those funds. I mean, that's frankly not the city of Telside's problem, but we are part of the county, so in a sense, it's, it's at least partially our problem to make sure the county doesn't walk into a problem here.
Does the county want to use some of their funds for the same purpose, weren't they?
I, yeah, I believe so. And, and I, I have some concerns about, I don't like the word stipend. I think there's a different way to do it, and I'll, I'm happy to do a little more digging on our side of that, at the very least.
All right.
We have not issued payment to the county that way.
Correct. We have not issued payment on either one of these because we have not had any kind of agreement or anything with either one, so.
Okay, thank you.
And like the school, they've not requested their money yet, so. And I wouldn't just pay them until they request it.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that interlocal agreement there will be a relatively simple matter, so.
All right. Trying to keep us moving along, taking time.
Do we need to go back, though, and on this additional, do you need to table it again till next meeting?
We can. Is there a motion to table it to the next meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by John, seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, moving on now to new business, travel policy. At the Board of Public Works, the last meeting, it was a favorable recommendation to the council for consideration. And Connie and I's digging, I guess you could say, researching, we cannot find that we have a travel policy for the city. We do have some things where it talks about how much your stipend you get paid for.
Per mile.
Per mile and stuff like that, but like I said in the meeting, the great clerk treasurer we have, her auditor hat on, and she worked for the auditor's office, and was able to get a copy of what the county has, so we just plagiarized a little bit, you know.
Just a few things.
Just a few things, yeah. And we tailored this to fit what the city's needs were when it was related to travel. It sets like how much meals can be in a day, which I believe is $60. It sets how many miles it has to be away before lodging could be considered. It also talks about tolls, because I don't know if the counties had tolls in it, did it?
No, it did not.
So we added that.
We added that.
If someone was going, like in the Louisville area, you know, they got that toll there, and I don't know where else tolls are, but that's something we need to address. It also talks about what's not paid for. So if anybody wants to go out and have a bunch of alcoholic drinks and, and get their phone and start charging a bunch of numbers and all that, we're not going to cover that. So bleeding tickets, so no, not happening. So I don't know if the council, if y'all had a chance to review this, does, any questions in it before I have Jeff read the ordinance? So we can change.
I would note there's some tiny differences between the version that's in the packet. We tweaked it a little bit.
What did you tweak?
Just today, we changed the title of it.
Changing the title.
Oh.
And one reference to the Board of Public Works.
All right.
The Board of Public Works and Safety made a recommendation, I believe the version that's in your packet says it's a joint ordinance. It is not a joint ordinance, so when I read it, it will sound a tiny bit different because of that.
And this would be what, ordinance?
1205.
1205, thank you. So if there's no questions or no further discussion, we're entertaining a motion to allow the first reading of ordinance number 1205.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, you want to read 1205 as fast as you can? It's a quite a lengthy.
As fast as I can, I can get through it. City of Telside, ordinance number 1205, ordinance of Telside Common Council approving policies for travel and conference expenses. Whereas elected officials of Telside, Indiana, all other full-time employees, hereinafter collectively referred to as attendees, from time to time attend conferences, training, and other meetings on the business of Telside. And whereas the Telside Board of Public Works and Safety and the Telside Common Council have determined that it is in the best interest of citizens of Telside and the efficient operation of Telside as a government, that a uniform policy be reestablished for reimbursement and payment of expenses by all attendees for approval, approved travel on city business. And whereas it is the intent of city government to provide travel reimbursement for expenses incurred in the performance of job duties while striving to do so in a fiscally responsible manner, with attendees exercising care to avoid impropriety or the appearance of impropriety. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Telside, Indiana as follows. Section one, mileage. Mileage for use of personal vehicle will be reimbursed at the federal standard mileage rate in effect at the time the travel expense was incurred. Attendees are encouraged to use city-owned vehicle if available in lieu of receiving a mileage allowance. In addition, attendees are encouraged to carpool if more than one attendee is attending the same function, and mileage reimbursement will be allowable only to the attendee providing the personal vehicle. Section two, registration fees. Registration fees may be paid in advance of the respective meeting or conference upon submission of a claim and proper documentation, that is, registration form, agenda, meeting notice, et cetera. To the clerk treasurer, in most cases, registration fees are to be paid from budgeted funds unless otherwise stipulated by the state agency or organization coordinating the conference. Certifications received after returning from city business should be submitted to the clerk treasurer to be attached to the appropriate travel claim. Section three, meal subsistence. Meal subsistence will be provided up to a maximum of $60 per day, except in the event of certain state statute which supersede this ordinance. The attendee must submit actual itemized meal receipts after returning from city business to be entitled to reimbursement. Credit card receipts that are not itemized, which show only the total meal amount, are not acceptable. Gratuities or tips will be reimbursed at a rate not to exceed fifteen percent of the meal costs. Also, the purchase of snacks and soft drinks between meals is not a reimbursable expense. Section four, lodging. Lodging expenses will be allowed in an amount equal to the conference rate for lodging, or if no conference rate is applicable, then at a rate not to exceed the normal room rate at the conference facility or nearest accommodations. No lodging allowances will be paid by the city for attendance at meetings, training sessions, or conferences that last only one day, or less, or less, and that are forty-five miles or less from City Hall. Most hotels will recognize and accept the sales tax exemption certificate and order that Telside, as a governmental unit, does not pay sales tax. Upon an attendee's making hotel reservations, the attendee shall inquire as to the hotel's policy on accepting tax-exempt certificates to save the city the expense of paying sales tax. The attendee shall submit a receipt to the clerk treasurer's office from the hotel or other meeting place where such accommodation was provided. Section five, parking fees. Attendees shall be entitled to reimbursement equal to the cost of the parking when required or necessary at the conference facility. The attendee shall submit parking receipts upon return from travel. Section six, toll fees. Attendees shall be entitled to reimbursement equal to the cost of the toll fee when required to attend a conference. The attendee shall submit toll fee receipts either upon return from travel or when received in the mail. Section seven, long-distance phone calls. Allowance will be provided only for long-distance calls made from the conference facility and/or hotel for the purpose of handling city business. Section eight, air travel. Allowance will be provided only if the cost of airline tickets and rental vehicles is less costly than the traditional means of travel and/or in the event of air travel being advantageous due to the time constraints and the urgency of the situation. Section nine, documentation of travel claims. All travel expenses except mileage for which attendees are requesting payment and/or reimbursement must be submitted on a state-prescribed city claim form and supported by substantial documentation, including registration forms or meeting agendas, giving the date, purpose, and registration fee amount. Actual itemized receipts are necessary for all other expenditures such as lodging, meals, and parking. Attendees must submit completed travel expense claims for all individual expenses within thirty days after travel. Travel expenses for which an attendee seeks reimbursement must have been budgeted by the city council. Expenses not budgeted may not be reimbursed except for state-called meetings in which the expenses are to be paid from funds not appropriated as dictated by state statute. Section ten, non-allowable travel charges. Certain travel expenses shall not be reimbursed by the city and therefore, if incurred, shall be the responsibility of the attendee. Non-allowable travel charges include, but are not limited to, out-of-state travel unless prior approval is granted by the Board of Public Works and Safety, hotel in-room charges such as movies, bars, concessions, et cetera, personal entertainment or travel related thereto, alcoholic beverages, personal phone charges, valet services unless valet service is the only option available, in-city meal expenses prior to or upon return from travel, snacks and drinks purchased between meals, travel expenses for an accompanying spouse or non-city employee guest of the attendee, traffic fines for parking, speeding, et cetera, meals more than $60 per day. Travel expenses incurred that are not otherwise addressed within this ordinance will be reviewed for approval at the discretion of the Board of Public Works. Section eleven, specific state statutes relating to travel expenses. It is recognized that certain state statutes govern the amounts of allowable travel reimbursements, and such state statutes shall supersede this ordinance. Such statutes include, but are not limited to, the following. Indiana Code 511114 regarding the State Board of Accounts called conferences for all elected positions within the city of Telside. All payments except registration fees shall be paid from the general, city general fund from funds not otherwise appropriated. Section twelve, annual review of travel policy. This ordinance may be reviewed annually by the Telside Board of Public Works and, Telside Board of Public Works and Safety and the Telside Common Council, with consideration being given to any changes in Indiana statute and the state of Indiana's then-existing travel policy and procedures. Section thirteen, abuse of travel policy. Abuse of this travel policy ordinance, including falsifying expense reports to reflect costs not incurred by the employee, can be grounds for disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment. It is further resolved that this ordinance should repeal all ordinances and/or resolutions that pertain to city policies for travel and conference expenses previously adopted by the city of Telside, passed and adopted by the Common Council of the City of Telside, Indiana this fifth day of June, 2023.
All right, counsel, you've had the first reading of ordinance number 1205 in entirety. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second and third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Please do second, third reading by title only.
Sure. City of Telside, Indiana, ordinance number 1205, ordinance of the Telside Common Council approving city policies for travel and conference expenses. Third reading, City of Telside, ordinance number 1205, ordinance of the Telside Common Council approving city policies for travel and conference expenses.
All right. Counsel, you've had first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1205. Is there any questions? There are none, or you entertain a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion made by Larry, seconded by Phillip, and no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. Sorry we take out all the fun. No, but it's good.
And I will get copies to all employees and make sure that departments all have one in their office.
We'll email it out.
So that people know what, that we passed it.
So, all right. Next item on the agenda is item B, economic revitalization area ordinance. So we currently have this area. Do you have the ordinance for that?
I've got the ordinance, and John's got the map.
Okay, good. We currently have one, and I'm going to try to explain it the best.
I flipped it over on you.
Well, you did. It mainly includes a lot of Main Street, both East and West Side, with the exception of one block on Washington and Ninth, and then a lot of areas going west towards the river from Fulton all the way up to Bloom in the river. Upon reviewing the original, well, not the original, but like the second, one of the Upon reviewing the original, well, not the original, but like the second, one of the drafts amended, as you went down Main Street, for some reason, you know how there's, like, the forty-by-seventy lots, corner lots, you got one corner, the back corner, almost like every block, it excluded the back corner for some reason on one block or another. Really strange, because if you're gonna develop a block on Main Street, you probably would need the whole, you know, two blocks there or the two forty-by-seventies to get your forty-by-one-forty to do something. I don't know how we would address that if that ever happened, but.
There might have been a reason for that, but I can't imagine what it was.
Well, we kind of suspected a few reasons, but anyways, we clarified that, but we also added some blocks to it. We added quite a few down Ninth Street. We also added some areas that by Swiss plywood. So the part of the building that's still standing was not part of it initially, the original or the amended one. So we added that one. And we also added what's across the street from that, that's an empty lot there, that we've talked about housing there potentially. And so any, for anyone to receive tax abatement in these areas, you have to have this ERA, ERC, sorry, area.
ERA.
Yeah, I had it right.
You had it wrong.
The ERC is the thing for, I, and not.
I'm a restrictive cabinet.
No, that's another one there, don't even get, that's, I've gotta redo my ERC, that's why it's on my mind. So those are some areas we have tried to do, and I can get you all, if we approve this tonight or if you decide to table it till later, that's fine, a better map of the area that's being added to it. So, I know, it extends further past this, I don't go to, it goes all the way to Payne Street. This map only takes it to Scheller, which is close, but. We cleaned up a lot of it, and we added some areas up around the Swiss plywood area.
There is a bigger one that I have to have this back, because.
That's the current.
That is the only one we have.
The only thing that.
Is that the current or is that the proposed?
That's, that's partly current, because.
Partly current, and we've not marked on it the new blocks or anything.
Okay, so it does not have.
So it's still not, no.
So if you're not in that area, can you not get a tax abatement?
Cannot.
Where's, where's it stopped there on?
Payne Street.
No, it go.
Mayor, when some of this economic.
Hey, I'm sorry, I went to Tell, so, excuse me.
The revitalization area involved, when the city purchased the Tell City furniture down there, and as part of that, we purchased the land and tore down the buildings, and then we had some ground field cost involved, I think, because of pollution in the soil. But then, then that was part of the deal, is if we do that, then the city hopes to get reimbursed by taxation eventually, by people investing in that area, right? So we tried to encourage investment, we're an area, we spent money tearing down the buildings that were there that weren't going to be used, and again, that wasn't going to be an industrial area. So the only, the only hope was residential.
That's the.
Business, small business or whatever, we were gonna have some more factories built on Seventh Street.
Yeah.
That wasn't gonna happen.
And as you ran through the previous ordinance, it was hard to follow when you looked at the map of what areas are in it and not in it. Janice and I spent, and Connie, spent hours trying to just understand it, because there were some added later, and they're like, oh, there it is up there. So Janice put it in a nice, kind of a attachment spreadsheet, that breaks it down, it's easy to follow and easy to find. So that's gonna be the attachment with it. It made a difference.
We finally got it, double-checked it about four o'clock this afternoon.
Yes.
So. We don't have this, we didn't send this out.
Um, no, it was not sent out, because I finalized the ordinance, the ordinance amendment earlier today, and then we received the exhibit later today.
You didn't have the ordinance, oh, I apologize.
So we can, if you guys want more time to consider this, I, I don't think it's gonna be a total deal breaker if it's, we wait two weeks.
Well, they don't have the, the council don't have.
But we could have a special meeting.
We could have a special meeting.
If you want.
I'm okay with going forward, I just want to make sure.
I'm okay.
I still don't understand. So this applies basically to Main Street, correct?
Main Street and Ninth Street.
And Seventh.
And Seventh, and then it kinda, that's where it kinda is yellow, like, all this is already, this already, what's in yellow is what was already in there old. What you're looking at was the first one that was done, back when Mayor Goffin was in. Then there was an amendment when Mayor Ewing was in, and that added some more. Now we're looking at admitting, at doing that amendment again on.
Originally done in two thousand and three, amended in twenty thirteen, here we are in twenty, we got a ten-year thing going here.
Yes.
What was the date of that?
Two thousand and four.
So that's the original.
We, or Eric and Connie picked up on this, even though the wall blocks are shaded, the legal description did not pick us up. So if you don't have a shaded half, it looks like it's already done, but there was some blocks missed. So we're getting those up now. Shading and boxes, they were already.
Part of it.
Part of it.
Are they in the legal descriptions?
So now, actually.
We have to do that, that ordinance, which we picked up, seven thirty area. So there should be, should we, they don't have that with the old area, should.
Correct. That's what we was working on, we didn't get quite done. And if you guys want to wait, like I said, it's totally fine, it's not gonna hurt our feelings, but we're just getting the ball rolling on this to get it, get it going. And it's not the end of the world at all, it's. So if you're not comfortable, I don't recommend moving forward tonight with it if you don't, I want you all to be comfortable.
We would have a meeting in two weeks from now. I do have the current tax abatements for next year.
So we're not gonna have.
To be approved, that I forgot to put on the agenda today and didn't get copies for you all. Yeah, this is the ones we have to review every year, so, I mean, we would have more business than just that if you would want to have a meeting in two weeks.
All right, thank you. So if you want to wait, totally.
I would prefer to wait. I would like, I'd like to see the finalized.
So what, if it's okay at the council, what we'll have prepared for the next special meeting, which we can have that around the water department, it probably won't take that long, but we'll have the current, as it is today, before adopting anything, in one color, maybe black, and then we'll have the proposed in another color, like yellow. Will that help?
Yes, it would.
Visual aid always helps.
I just wanted to be clear, so I have, have everything you want when we get it done. It won't take us all that long to do it, it's just, it needs to be updated, it needs to be done, and.
I, I agree.
Yeah. So we'll have that at the next meeting, is that okay? Do you want a motion to table it? Is there a motion to table it?
So moved.
Motion made by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gary, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item in our new business we added was item C, the transfer.
And I just finished this just a little bit ago, so I did not get this emailed to you all, that I can read it and we can go from there then. It's resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen. It's a resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfers between classifications within several budgets. It's in the general fund, the Park and Recreation Department budget. We, they're proposing to transfer nine thousand dollars from seasonal personnel to equipment, and then eleven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to be transferred from the lease payment for a mower to equipment. And that is the only transfer that's on here. At the beginning of the year, when this was, this additional was done on this lease payment, at that time, the Park and Recreation Director was thinking about leasing two mowers, but it ends up that we can pay it, pay for one of them now, and then he is only going to have to lease one mower. And he will, and he has figured out the funding for that. And on the season, seasonal personnel, that we are transferring everything out of that line item, that nine thousand, because he is not going to use any summer help this year. With this, with these additional mowers and bigger mowers, he feels that he doesn't need any, any part-time help or any seasonal help.
So the total's twenty thousand five eighty, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, I do, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we get to important, now we get to the important part of our meeting, the committee and ward reports. So I'll, Larry, we do partners in pride, you just want to do yours during your report, is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, be fine.
Okay, quarters. On May eleventh, I had opportunity to attend the open house for the Metro Department down Seventh Street. What did I do?
No, no, I was teasing him.
He's teasing me.
I go, I know where my name is. You're good.
Okay. May sixteenth, attended a plan commission meeting where Block and Field and Woodchucks presented their development plans. May twenty-first, I went to the Tell City Park Department chicken dinner, only to arrive at quarter of eleven, and they were already sold out, and there was a line stretching back to the corners, I wasn't the only person that did get a chicken dinner, but they had a very successful chicken dinner.
More chickens next year.